On Zoom?
No, you're turned down. Two, yeah. You're turned down now.
All righty. I call out of recess Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals hearing on petitions number 25P 1639 and 25P 1640, Mound Hill Roads North Solar LLCs and Mound Hill Roads South Solar LLCs request for special use permits to construct and operate a community solar energy system in the county. If somehow you are listening to me but can't figure out how to get on Zoom, the Zoom meeting ID is 915-3923-9154, and the password is 209840. As to YouTube, if you want to view and listen to us on YouTube, although a short delay, use your browser, go to www.youtube.com. In the search bar, type Lee County, LIL, short for Illinois, Zoning Board of Appeals. Don't worry about upper lowercase, lower cases at the letters. Find the session date you want, presumably today, April 28th, and click on it, and you should be seeing and listening to us. I note the presence tonight of Chair of the ZBA, Mr. Forster; its Vice Chair, Mr. Burrow; its member, Tim Crawford; zoning officer, Henkel. Whoops. Assessor on the... No. No one from the State's Attorney's Office. A couple representatives of the petitioners here in the courtroom, literally a couple, two that I see. Our IT professional, Jonathan Porter, myself, three board members. And I think that should, on Zoom, I see one, two, 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 two interested parties on Gentlemen, you're about to consider first findings of fact and thereafter recommendations to the Lee County Board for Mound Hill Road LLC's petition for special use permits to construct a commercial solar energy system in your county. Your Board rules provide that your meetings will be governed by Robert's Rules of Orders. Robert's Rules of Order. These axioms have been in use for well over 100 years. They ensure a fair and civilized forum for all members' viewpoints to be addressed and the issues to be decided. They are in place to provide a step-by-step, formalized process by which your Board can methodically go about its business at hand. I highlight a few points to make sure we are all on the same page. While I am present to assist you in the mechanical operation of your decision-making and have given you somewhat of a start by way of suggested areas to address in the alternatives, I hope you understand that I cannot help you make any decisions in any fashion. The substance of the decisions you are, as the ZBA, yours alone to make. Hoping you all understand for the reasons for it, I will very politely, hopefully, assert that there be no general discussion on any substantive matter and that any debate be only on a pending motion. To relieve all of you of the burden of reading each motion, I will, one by one, propose a motion in the alternative, and it will be displayed on the screen for you to read and digest. This ensures that all members, me, your secretary, and the public, know precisely what is brought to the floor. This is extremely important. Doing so eliminates any confusion and the corrosion of your decision-making. It is then, after I read a proposed motion in the alternative, time for a proponent of the proposed motion to indicate he moves the adoption of that motion and in which alternative he does so. After the movement completes that task, the floor is open for a second. It is a common misunderstanding that the, that, that he who actually seconds a motion must be, excuse me, it is a common misunderstanding that the notation must be made of the member who actually seconds the motion, such is not the case. In fact, although the movement is bound by the rules to vote for the motion he makes, the person seconding the motion is not so obliged. If a motion is made and receives no second, it becomes out of order and the floor is open for another motion. If a motion receives a second, it is then the pending motion and the subject of debate. If a member wishes to amend a pending motion, he, of course, may do so. If that kind of motion receives a second, it becomes the immediately pending motion for debate, and the question becomes whether or not the main motion should be amended as stated. There is such a thing as a motion to amend a motion to amend, but please, I strongly urge to avoid the machinations of that process. During debate, unless a motion is made to extend or limit it, each member has a reasonable opportunity for his remarks on that motion. I will call on the movement for his comments first. I will then ask, in order of seniority, if there are members other than the movement for any further observations on the motion. Once there is no further debate, I will put the question for a vote. I will do so by verbally announcing the pending motion. I will indicate the manner of the vote and the number of members needed to carry the motion. Robert's Rules contain many other procedural maxims. We will deal with any of those more infrequent matters as they arise. I am sure, as in the past, we will move through this process in an organized and highly efficient manner. And as I read this, I just thought of something. I'll check when we take a break. I hope it doesn't occur before that, but we can find out. It occurs to me that when, when a, when a board is made of, when a government, governmental board in Illinois is made up of five members, it takes three members to pass a motion, and I don't think it reduces to two when there's only three here. I think it remains three. So I think, and we'll check on that, if some vote is two to one, it is actually a defeat. But we'll check on that if it comes up. Am I getting too close? All right, proposed motion number one, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that two petitions, each accompanied by a large packet of various documents and photographs, have been filed with the Lee County, Illinois, Zoning and Planning Office, which are number 25P 1639 and 25P 1640, each requesting a special use permit for a commercial solar energy facility. That is a proposed motion. You don't have to repeat it, just indicate in the alternative what you want.
Okay, which one of the?
Yep, finds or cannot find.
Okay, I moved that in that first one, we find, the ZBA finds.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as I just read it. Excuse me, while I get organized myself. Now, where's the tools here? I can't find the cross, it's the crosshairs, they're all grayed out.
Got it.
Good thing I got a printout, but. We have a technical problem. The Word program on my laptop, on the laptop, the county's laptop is now grayed out for all the options, so we'll keep going, though. I can do that by hand. Proposed motion number two, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that the following, that following the submission of the initial petition. We never voted on that one. Got, sorry, thank you. All in favor of the motion, as I, as, as I read and was moved by Mr. Burrow, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed by nay. Thank you, motion carries. Proposed number two, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that the following the submission of the initial petition, proper notice of the filing of the petition and of the impending April 3, 2025, ZBA hearing was published in the Dixon Telegraph on March 19, 2025, and furthermore, United States Postal Service, Certified Postal Service. Okay. Certified mailings of the same notice were sent to real estate property owners whose properties would be adjacent to the proposed development boundary, and Lee County Zoning and Planning Administrator, Ms. Alice Henkel, supplemented the above notices, one by having it physically posted and, posted the same on March 19, 2025, where the proposed development would be located, and by way of an agenda included in the Agenda Center of the Lee County website on March 19, 2025, and act the same agenda to the county boards, county board chairmans, bulletin board in the old Lee County Courthouse also on March 19, 2025. Do I have a move it?
I move that ZBA finds.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Having a motion and a second? Any discussion on your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I, I put the question, all those in favor of the adoption of that motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed by nay. Motion carries. Number three, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that on April 2, 2025, the petitioners filed revisions to their previously submitted applications with the Lee County Planning Zoning Office. Among those revisions were, according to a petitioner's witness, due to concerns expressed at a Palmyra Township meeting attended by its representatives, moving the placement of the solar arrays within, within each of their respective project parcels, for the north project, some 300 feet further from Mound Hill Road to the east and about 30 feet to the south, and for the proposed south project, more than 600 feet away from Mound Hill Road, also toward the east and almost 300 feet to the north, which, due to the topography of the land, as can be seen on the site plane profile, puts a ridge between the arrays and the view from the east, and letters from the United States Army Corps of Engineers indicating that neither project requires a permit from its agency, and letters from IDNR's shipo that indirect area of potential effects contains two structures eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places, no known or any high probability of containing any archaeological resources within the direct area of potential effects, and therefore, quote, "meets the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation, will not, will not adversely affect any historic properties and therefore may proceed," and an updated vegetation management plan, and added commitments to provide annual training to emergency responders, and professional engineering certifications to certain reports. Now, we'll take a motion to that effect.
I move the ZBA finds.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second heard. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as I just read it poorly. Adoption of that motion, but it's also displayed on the screen here in the courtroom. Oh, God. Guess I'm gonna have to quit doing that. Where am I? One, two, three?
Three.
There we go. As, as I read and is now displayed on the board in the courtroom, the screen, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed by nay. Motion is carried. Proposed number four, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that a hearing was initially announced by, the hearing was initially announced by Chairman Bruce Forster on the evening of Thursday, April 3, 2025, at 7:00 PM, in the former courtroom on the third floor of the old Lee County Courthouse, and, under the authority provided by its own rules prior to actually initiating the hearing, the ZBA engaged the services of Tim Slavin, a retired circuit judge, as the facilitator for the proceedings.
I move the ZBA finds.
Okay, fine.
Second.
I got a second. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Crawford?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as I, as proposed by Mr. Crawford. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed by no, nay. Motion's adopted. Excuse me just a minute to catch up. Okay, now we can get down to it. Number five, proposed, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that the first portion of the public hearing regarding the petitions for special use, petitions, was for your Lee County ZBA to accept testimony, hear arguments, and receive public comments. And that first stage portion began on April 3, 2025, and concluded on April 28. That's incorrect. April 21, right? April 21, 2025, after approximately 5.5 and 2/3 hours of total hearing time. Do I hear a motion?
I move the ZBA finds.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Any board member, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Mr. Burrow. All those, the adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed by nay. Motion carries. Lee County, number six, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find. Yeah, it was. Thank you. Mr. Burrow is okay, would you accept a correction to the 14th?
Yes.
Mr. Burrow, is that all right?
Yes.
I don't think it's much debate. Number six, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that throughout the hearing process, no longer were there any mandated COVID-19 safety measures in place for public gatherings such as the ZBA hearing, but through the auspices of the Lee County IT Department and Lee County Zoning Officer, Ms. Alice Henkel, interested parties were given the opportunity to remotely and virtually participate in the process by video or teleconferencing on the Zoom platform through the use of a computer, cellphone, or similar device at a location of their choosing, and furthermore, interested parties could remotely view and listen to the proceedings in near real time or later in recorded mode on a YouTube feed, also courtesy of Lee County IT Department and Ms. Henkel. And lastly, the entire, the proceedings were taken down by a certified shorthand reporter and subsequently transcribed. Those transcripts of all testimony, arguments, and public comments and ZBA debate were and continue to be available on the, on the zoning and planning webpages within the Lee County website. Do I hear a, a motion for that proposal in an alternative?
ZBA finds.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Any comment on your motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as, as propounded by Mr. Crawford. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being opposed, it is adopted. Number seven, proposed, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that at any given time the most interested parties that appeared either in person or on Zoom was seven. Do I hear a proposal?
I move the ZBA finds.
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I put the question. The question being put is in the adoption of the motion we just covered and Mr. Burrow proposed and is displayed on the screen in the courtroom. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed by nay. Motion carries. Number eight, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that over the course of the first stage, everyone, the petitioner and interested parties, were given a complete and fair opportunity to be heard. Each was given the chance to present evidence, including witnesses and exhibits, cross-examine the witnesses of others, and to present a closing argument, statement, or public comment, either orally or in writing. That's the motion. Do I hear anyone propound it in the, in an alternative?
I hear by, the ZBA finds.
Mr. Crawford proposes finds.
Second.
Got a second? Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question on the, is on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Mr. Crawford. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed nay. Motion is adopted. Nine, we, the members of the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals, finds or cannot find that we have heard, that we heard or read all of the evidence produced and examined, each of the exhibits.
I move Lee County finds.
Finds, okay. By Mr. Burrow, and I got a second.
No comment.
No comment, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed by nay. That motion is adopted as well. Number 10, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that four people took the witness stand, were placed under oath or affirmation, and testified. Those witnesses, in order of their appearance, with a very brief summary of what they had to say, were as follows. Ms. Alice Henkel, Lee County Zoning and Planning Administrator, explained the nature of her office and her varied duties as Lee County Zoning and Planning Administrator, and laid the foundation for the admission of her exhibits, which included various notice processes for the instant ZBA hearing and the sorted documents accepted and kept within her office. Mr. Austin Schwer, co-CEO of Sundial Energy, explained the relationship between Mound Hill Road North Solar LLC, Mound Hill Road South Solar LLC, Sundial Energy LLC, and Clean Capital Holdings LLC, and that if special uses are approved, once built and operational, the Mound Hill Road entities would be marketed and sold within, possibly as soon as the next few months, to probably an institutional asset manager. He opined that green energy is promoted by Lee County Comprehensive Plan. He continued with a PowerPoint presentation explaining the general nature of the development, detailed deciding decisions, designs, and plans if approved, including the revisions to its original application filed on April 2, 2025, and 25th. And outlined the general nature of the studies and reports commissioned by his firm. He answered questions from interested parties about things, such things as the effect of the sighting on nearby Midway Drive-In, concluded by giving an outline of how he believed the development met the various provisions of the Illinois statute and the Lee County ordinance governing commercial energy systems. Mr. Andy Galom, Senior Project Manager with 21 years of experience for CEC, provides field services to design and, to design and engineering, has a professional engineering license in a few states, including Illinois. He explained with the revision changes to the original application, and with more particularity, the details of the components and the planned steps for installation, construction, and decommissioning. Mr. Michael Marus, President of Marus and Company, a 40-year real estate appraisal and consulting firm based in Park Ridge, Illinois, laid a foundation for his expertise by reciting his educational and professional work experience and his present emphasis on Midwest residential values. He then explained the sources of his, sources of information and data he uses to support his opinion and conclusion that the Mound Hills Road solar projects would have no effect on residential property values in the area of the development. There were no other witnesses, but the reader should note that rather than the above short synopsis, there is no substitute for reading the transcripts of the witnesses' testimony. Do I hear a motion in the altern, in one of the alternatives?
I so move ZBA finds.
Finds, right? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Any other board member want to say anything? Here, address anything. Hearing none, seeing none, I put the question. The question is on the adoption of the motion as I read and Mr. Burrow proposed with, with the word finds. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed by nay. Number 11, the Lee County ZBA finds, cannot find that the following exhibits were admitted into evidence by the facilitator and considered by the board. Zoning officers exhibits, ZO number one, petition for special use, Mound Hill North Solar LLC, number 25P 1639, ZO number two, petition for special use, Mound Hill Road Solar LLC, number 25P 1640. CO number three, Lee County SWCD report for Mound Hill Road North Solar LLC, ZO number four, Lee County SWCD report for Mound Hill South Solar LLC, ZO number five, a letter from Deborah Dillow, Palmyra Township Supervisor, to the Lee County Zoning Officer, Alice Henkel, relaying the objections of the Palmyra Township Planning Commission and the Palmyra Township Board to the two proposed Mound Hill Road solar projects. Petitioners exhibit number one, notice of public meeting, Palmyra Township Planning Commission, Mound Hill Road North Solar LLC, and Mound Hill Road South Solar LLC, accompanied by a site plan, and copies of envelopes mailed by USPS First Class to all property owners within 1/4 mile of the development's boundary, and all within the nearby Northern Hill, Northland Hills subdivision in Whiteside County. Petitioner number two, notice of public meeting, Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals, Mound Hill Road North Solar LLC, and Mound Hill Road South Solar LLC, and copies of envelopes mailed by USPS First Class to all property owners adjacent to the development's boundary. Petitioner number three, certificate of publication from the Dixon Telegraph certifying publication in that newspaper on March 19, 2025, accompanied by the actual published page. Pet number four, Mound Hill Road North Solar LLC's originally filed application. Pet number five, Mound Hill Road South Solar LLC's originally filed application. Pet number six, three-ring binder containing Mound Hill Road North Solar LLC's revised portion of its application. Excuse me a minute. Uh, pet number seven, three-ring binder containing Mount Hill Road South Solar LLC's revised portion of its application. Pet number eight, hard copy of Austin Schwer's PowerPoint presentation. Pet number nine, Andrew Galone resume. And pet number 10, hard copy of Michael Marus's PowerPoint.
Mr. Chair, I move that Lee County ZBA fines.
I'll second.
Got a second? Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the motion as I read it and a, and proposed, now proposed by Mr. Burrow. Adoption, that motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted. Number 12, Lee County ZBA finds that following, the following people availed themselves of the opportunity to make closing statements or public comments with a brief synopsis of what they had to say. Mr. Nick Standiford, attorney for the developer, reviewed the ways in which he urged that his client had proven compliance with various provisions of the Lee County Ordinance, and asked the ZBA to recommend approval of the special uses to the Lee County Board. Mr. Nick Hermas, an interested party, voiced his concerned about, concerns about various items, most particularly about the proposed loss of farmland to these special uses. Uh, Ms. Kim Bruno, an interested party, read a statement from the owners of the Midway Drive-In, expressing their concern about having a solar farm near their historical business and its effects on other property owners in the area. Mr. Griffin Thuson, an interested party, also conveyed his alarm over the proposed dedication of prime farmland at issue and the concern about groundwater contamination. Do I hear?
I move ZBA fines.
Okay. Mr. Crawford moves that the alternative fines, do I hear a second?
I second it.
Got it. Um. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion that is pending and displayed on the board here in the, on the screen here in the courtroom. Adoption, that motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion is adopted as well. Number 13, lucky 13, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that it was revealed through the testimony of its agent that the two Mount Hill Road entities are owned by Clean Capital LLC, a venture capital company, and Sundial LLC is the developer of the proposed projects, which if approved, would operate and maintain them unless or until sold to one or more bona fide purchasers, and the proposed community solar projects would allow subscribed customers to save money on their electric bills. Do I hear a, an alternative to that proposed motion?
I move the ZBA fines.
Consider it done, any second? Got a second? Any, uh, thing you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as I just read it and Mr. Burrow, uh, picked up and proposed, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion is, just like the Cubs can't lose. 14, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that the proposed development would be a solar farm located on the east side of Mount Hill Road. That's, yeah, as it travels north off Illinois Route 2, consisting of two facilities on three adjacent north-south pin parcels, two for Mount Hill Road North Solar and one for Mount Hill Road South Solar, which components, in the original application version, were closer to Mount Hill Road, but in the revised applications, have, in response to concerns of area landowners, been moved farther north and west. Actually, east, is that what you... Change that to east. Away from Mount Hill Road, resulting in the nearest non-participating residents being 870 feet away from the development.
I move ZBA fines.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as I read it, adopted by Mr., proposed by Mr. Crawford. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The motion is adopted. 15, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that it, according to the developer's witnesses, the expected useful life of the proposed projects would be 35 years, which is at least partially supported by the terms of the leases, which run for 30 years with two subsequent five-year extensions. Do I hear a proposal?
I move ZBA fines.
I second.
Got a second, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of that motion as I just read and is displayed on the board here, it's screen here in the courtroom. Adoption requires a vote, a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. 16, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that through both its applications and the testimony of one of its agents, the generation components of each SES would be approximately 12,870 solar panels for the north facility, and approximately 5,928 for the south facility, set on a north-south single-axis tracking array system with a maximum tilt of 55 degrees, and a height of not more than 20 feet above the ground surface when in full-tilt mode, and mounted on guide rails supported by pylons, without any artificial base, preferably pile-driven or possibly augured with helicon screws into the ground and without any artificial foundation, to between eight and 12 feet deep, made probably of galvanized steel, but will be dependent on the composition of the supporting soil, feeding electric, uh, electrical collection lines, which would be routed to one inverter in each project, and two transformers in the north project, and one in the south project, possibly based on concrete pads up to one foot high, and would then be routed, as required by COMEd... Better add that, to... To overhead, oh, no, excuse me, that was wrong. Would be routed overhead on five utility poles between 30 to 50 feet high, the only systems, equipment, and structures exceeding 20 foot, 20 feet high within the development, running in an east-west direction spaced 50 feet apart, to a point of interconnection or POI into the COMEd's existing overhead transmission line, located in the southwestern portion of each prop, of each of the properties along Mount Hill Road, and communication components, which would be digital transmission lines, presumably used to remotely monitor and manage the SES. Do I hear a motion in, an, an alternative?
I move ZBA fines.
I second it.
Got a motion, a second, anything you want to say about your, uh, motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
All right, that calls for, uh, um, putting the question, I'll put the question on the motion as I read it and, and became the property of Mr. Crawford. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by all of you, and, um, I keep saying majority, but it's not, requires a vote by all three of you. Adoption, uh, um, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, 17, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that through the testimony of its agent and the revised site plans, there would be newly constructed gravel access roads serving the proposed development sites, which, for the north facility, such road would cross a newly installed culvert within the east ditch of Mount Hill Road and proceed west... Proceed east. Gee. Directionally challenged, sorry. For about 260 feet, and then turn directly north for about 130 feet, and then feed between the two big sections of the solar array. For the south facility, it would also cross a newly installed culvert within the east ditch of Mount Hill Road, and then proceed straight east for a distance of about 320 feet, where it would feed between two big sections of the solar array, which would be constructed by digging and setting aside as a berm for future decommissioning replacement, about 12 inches of topsoil, 12 feet wide... Let, laying a base of geotextile fabric and covering that up to grade level with 12 inches of IDOT Class 6 aggregate, and neither of which access road would have public access. Um, do I hear a motion in the, one of the alternatives?
Um, I move to ZBA approves.
Fines, you mean?
Fair fines, yes.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Got a second, any, uh, thing you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
Uh, let's see, we're on 17. You changed west to east and, oh, you read six, did you say 12 feet wide or 16 feet? Why would you read it?
I thought I said 16, but...
Okay, that's all right, that's why, I didn't know if I heard that right. So 16's the correct figure then, okay, that's fine.
Anything else, Burrow? Any other board member? Um, that brings up putting the question, and it is put, the question is on the adoption of the motion as I read and was, uh, um, adopted by Mr., or proposed by Mr. Burrow. Um, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. I said majority again, but remind me that it's all of you. 18, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that approximately 20 months prior to the time the two petitions at issue were filed with Lee County... County... Zoning and Planning Office on July 20th, 2023, the Lee County Board Vice Chairman signed into law the newest SES ordinance passed by the county board, number 23-07-008, subsequently codified into Lee County Ordinance Section 10-15-20, which would then be the provision specifically applicable to the petitions at issue, which it, which has been codified, and that in the, and in that report, provisions that follow are boldly italicized.
I move, uh, ZBA fines.
Okay.
Second.
Got a second? Hey, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as I read it and proposed, propounded by Mr. Crawford. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Number 19, the Lee County Board finds or cannot find that also in place at the time petitions were filed were certain provisions of the Lee County Ordinance, quote, "performance standards," end quote. Section 10-15-1, it's sequential, which, unless explicitly superseded or implicitly supplanted by the new SES ordinance, would also be applicable to the ZBA hearing. Do I hear a motion?
I move ZBA fines.
Do I hear a second? Got it, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion as I read it and is displayed here in the courtroom. Adoption, the require, of, of the motion requires the vote of all three. Uh, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion's adopted. Number 20, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find, finds or cannot find... That there are other Lee County Ordinance sections that are applicable to the petitions at issue, but those not addressed herein relate to requirements and provisions triggered at other process stages after the ZBA hearing, that is, such, such as building permit commencement of operation. Uh, period, do, do I hear, uh...
I move ZBA fines.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Crawford moves that the alternative be fined, fines, uh, it's been seconded, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of that motion, just propounded by Mr. Crawford. Um, the, adoption of the motion requires a vote by all members, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The motion is adopted. Adopted. Okay, that's all the non-direct ordinance stuff. Now, we'll move into the ordinance, I won't read the ordinance, but it's there for your reference. On motion number 21, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that the proposed development would be located on real estate zoned Ag 1.
I move ZBA fines.
I'll second.
Motion's second, the alternative find, um, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that the proposed development would be located on real estate zoned Ag 1. Adoption, that motion requires the vote by all three present members. Um, that, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by, by nay. The motion is adopted. Number 22, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that both Mount Hill Road South Solar LLC and Mount Hill Road North Solar LLC filed petitions, applications, and revised applications with the Lee County Zoning and Planning Office.
Uh, I'm, excuse me, I move ZBA fines.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing the motion, in the alternative of fines, and hearing a second, um, I will put the question, question being put, oh, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion, displayed here on the screen in the courtroom, and read by me and proposed by Mr. Crawford. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, and the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion is adopted. Number 23, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that what certainly would be categorized as a summary was part of the Mount Hill Road North Solar and, and South Solar applications. Do I hear a motion in the alternative?
I move ZBA fines.
I second.
Got a second, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any, any, any other board member? Hearing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as just read and proposed by, by Mr. Burrow in the alternative of fines. Adoption of the motion requires the vote, a vote by all of you, vote be by voice, all those indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. Number twenty-four, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that within Mount Hill Road South Solar and North Solar summaries was a recitation that the generating capacity of the Mount Hill Road South Solar project would be two megawatts AC and five megawatts AC for the North Mount Hill Roads, Mount, Mount Hill Road Solar One. Adoption, that, uh, excuse me.
I move ZBA finds.
A second.
I got a finding and I got a second. Anything you want to say about your motion, proposed motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
All right. Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the motion as read, displayed here in the courtroom and proposed by Mr. Crawford in the alternative of finds. Adoption, the motion requires a vote by all of you. Um, vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. That one's adopted. Number twenty-four, Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that both Mount Hill Road Solar summaries recited that the solar panels would be manufactured by V-Sun, that's all caps, V-S-U-N, solar. Uh, but note twenty-five B following. Um, I'm sure I need to read that, read that, but, um, do I hear a proposed motion in one of the alternatives?
I move ZBA finds.
A second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
Just on a point of clarification, your note twenty-five B, I think it refers to like possible buyers, change of.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion, uh, as proposed by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires unanimity, uh, all those in, vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, no. Motion is adopted. Number twenty-five, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that within the north and south Mount Hill Road Solar summaries was a statement, brands and accompanying equipment specification sheet describing that the solar panels for the facility would be V-Sun Solar five four five W bifacial monocrystalline or similar models coated with anti-reflective AR substance and that are approximately ninety inches long, forty-five inches wide and weigh about seventy-two pounds. But on the witness stand, one of the representatives testified that the selection of the exact panels would be, to be used, would be the prerogative of the eventual development owner, development owner. Um, do I hear a motion in one of the alternatives?
I move ZBA finds.
I second it.
And, um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll, um, the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motions I read it and then adopt, proposed by Mr. Crawford. Adoption requires a vote by all of you. Adoption, uh, vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Oops. Motion's adopted. Twenty-six, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that within Mount Hill Road North Solar Summary was a statement that it would contain approximately twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight solar panels and within Mount Hill Road North, South Summary, a like statement that it would be five thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight panels.
Mr. Chair, I move ZBA finds.
A second.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put would be the adoption of the motion as read, displayed and proposed by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by all of you, um, and, um, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is adopted. I, by nay, I think I heard three, but, um, okay, motion's adopted. Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that within both Mount Hill Roads Solar Summary, summaries, it was averred that the maximum height of the panels at full tilt would be twenty feet. Do I hear a motion in one of the alternatives?
I move ZBA finds.
A second.
Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion proposed by Mr. Crawford, displayed on the screen here in the courtroom. Uh, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion's adopted. Number twenty-eight, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that within each Mount Hill Road Solar Summary, within each of the Mount Hill Road Solar summaries, it was declared that, quote, "The project would utilize," and, and, that, 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 should be, "an" existing ComEd substation, so no additional substations are proposed, and a petitioner's agent testified that this substation, ComEd River Road Substation, was some three and a half miles south and west of the development in Sterling Whiteside County. Do I hear a, um, motion, one of the motion in one of the alternatives?
Mr. Chair, I move ZBA finds.
I hear a second. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, for a second, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? All righty, then, I put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as I read it, has been proposed by, uh, Mr. Burrow in the, one of the alternatives. Um, adoption of the motion requires a unanimous vote, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted. Twenty-nine, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that within both Mount Hill Road summaries, it was quantified that it, that construction, quote, "is anticipated to last six to fifteen months," and that, quote, "there would be a two to three week period for the commissioning process before the project be," hmm. Before the project is operational, but on the witness stand, one of the witnesses testified that construction would take three to six months. Do I hear a motion in the alternative?
I move ZBA finds.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second? Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Um, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the motion as I read it, displayed on the, uh, screen here in the courtroom and proposed by Mr. Crawford. Adoption requires a vote by the, all of you, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Motion's adopted. Thirty, excuse me, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that within each summary and by extrapolation therefrom, if approved, each of the north and south projects would sit on adjacent sixty-seven point two-nine acre areas, making in the whole a rectangle of a rounded off, um, twenty-seven hundred feet east to west and twenty-two hundred feet north to south, here and after called the project site, the project parcels, all within Palmyra Township, this project site being located adjacent to the east side of Mount Hill Road, its southwestern boundary being approximately two thousand two hundred and twenty-five feet north of its intersection with Illinois Route Two, and its northwest boundary about nineteen hundred feet south of Mount Hill Road's intersection with Palmyra Road. Do I hear a motion in the alternative?
I move ZBA finds.
A second.
Got a second. Um.
No comments.
Thank you. Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is the adoption of the motion as read, displayed on the screen in the courtroom and, um, um, proposed by Mr. Burrow. Think, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, not majority, by all of you, the vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Motion is adopted. Thirty-one, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that both applicant, applicants, proposed leaseholders and possible short-term operators, Mount Hill Road South, so, South Solar LLC and the Mount Hill Road North Solar LLC are Delaware entities owned by Clean Capital LLC, which until sold, would own their, their respective facilities, and the developer and apparent present leaseholder is Sundial Energy LLC, a Minnesota entity. Do I hear a motion in the alternative?
I move ZBA finds.
Okay, I will done that. I hear the second. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Oh, okay. Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as I read it, displayed here on, um, the screen in the courtroom, and, um, that, um, and proposed by Mr. Crawford. Adoption, the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Motion is unanimously adopted. Thirty-two, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that the names, addresses, and phone numbers for Sundial Energy LLC, Mount Hill Road South Solar LLC, and Mount Hill Road North Solar LLC are listed in each summary, that for the north project, it is indicated that its sixty-seven point two-nine acres in number sixteen dash zero seven dash zero five dash three hundred dash zero zero five are owned by Mark Hermis, that for the south project, it is indicated that it's combined sixty-seven two-point-nine acres in's number sixteen zero seven zero five three hundred zero zero six and sixteen zero seven zero eight dash one hundred dash zero zero four are owned by John E. Hermis and Mary D. Hermis as trustees of AZ Hermis Trust dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty, and that for each proposed project, there is included in the summaries a, quote, memorandum of option to lease agreement, end quote, between the aforementioned property owners and Sundial Energy LLC. Do I hear a motion in one of those alternatives?
Mr. Chair, I move Lee, ZBA finds.
I'll second.
Got it. Got a second? Um, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Uh, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as I read it and is displayed on the, uh, uh, screen here in the courtroom. Adoption, the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those, not the majority, all of you, the vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Motion's adopted. Moving to number thirty-three, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that between materials in each of the Mount Hill applications, site, quote, site layout plan, end quote, quote, figures, end quote, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers reports, a reasonably current FEMA map and an IDNR ECOCAT review and consultation, the assorted verbiage throughout, there is shown or noted or reasonably implied, the proposed location of the solar panels, the legal description of all project, all projected project parcels, and the boundary lines for each of the three anticipated project parcels, including the identification of adjoining properties and relevant setback lines and existing third-party transition lines, but not necessarily within fifteen hundred feet of the facilities, and pin numbers of the proposed, uh, participating and non-participating residents within fifteen hundred feet of the development, and ancillary equipment within fifteen hundred feet of the proposed facility, and wetlands within fifteen hundred feet of the proposed facility, and flood plains within fifteen hundred feet of the proposed facility, and surface ditches within fifteen hundred feet of the proposed facility, and although the ordinance definition of the term layout is unclear, structures within the geographical boundaries of any applicable setback, and one temporary lay-down yard for each proposed facility, and there was sufficient evidence to conclude that the following items would not be present within fifteen hundred feet of the development, that is scenic or natural areas, any underground mines, or occupied community buildings, or public access roads, or any operations or maintenance building, or electric cabling to a substation within three hundred fifty, within fifteen hundred feet of the facility because from the POI to the substation are existing ComEd lines, or any planned new substation. But there is not shown, noted or reasonably implied, the location of subsurface drainage lines within fifteen hundred feet of facility. Um, do I hear a motion taking one of the alternatives?
I move S, uh, S ZBA find.
Got a motion that, the alternative finds, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it? Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Any other board member?
Uh, just point of clarity, in, in the red there, IV dot FFB, what's that referred to?
That's not actually a finding. That, that's what I'm going to put in the report if, if we get that far, if it's adopted. It's section four, F five B, uh, which, uh, if you note, subparagraph C that we just read talks about there's not noted or reasonably implied, reasonably implied the location of subsurface drainage lines within fifteen hundred feet, but later we'll note, you have the opportunity to note a promise they made to do a drain tile study down the road.
Okay, fine, thank you.
All right, do I hear, uh, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion, just in the blue, um, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in, not majority, all of you, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. I gotta do a little cleanup on that one. All right. Proposed number thirty-four, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that each of the Mount Hill applications contains a proposed decommissioning plan. Uh, period. Do I hear an alternative motion?
I move ZBA find.
A second.
Crawford asked that it be read finds. I got a second. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that each of the Mount Hill applications contains a proposed decommissioning plan. Adoption, the motion requires a unanimous vote, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Motion's adopted. Number thirty-five, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that each of the Mount Hill applications contains an executed AMON. I'll pick a motion in the alternative.
I move ZBA finds.
A second.
Got a, got a motion and a second? Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
Uh, no, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as I read it, displayed here in the, uh, courtroom on the screen, and proposed by Mr. Burrow. Adoption, the motion requires a vote by the majority. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority? No, it does not. Requires all of you, vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
You ever wonder if we're creatures of habit, just start doing that when you're not thinking, man. Number thirty-six. The Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that each of the Mound Hill applications contains a, uh, topographic map that includes the facility and its surrounding area. Take a motion in the alternative?
I move ZBA fines.
I'll second.
Crawford says fines. You got a second? Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Uh, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as I read it, displayed on the, uh, screen here in the courtroom, and is now proposed by Mr. Crawford. Uh, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 It's not the majority, it's all of you. By aye, all those opposed, nay. Motion's adopted. Thirty-seven. The Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that each of the Mound Hill application contains a national resources information report prepared by Lee County SWCD consisting of attachments of a custom soil resources report from the United States Department of Agriculture, wetlands determination sheets from the United States Army Corps of Engineers, FEMA flood insurance rate map, and a CEC prepared by, a CEC-prepared waters delineation report, but does not contain a stormwater management plan approved by the Lee County engineer. In shorthand sum, the SWCD report assesses LISA scores for the Mound Hill North project at land evaluation ninety-eight, site assessment of one twenty-two for a grand total of two twenty, and assesses LISA scores for the Mound Hill South project at a land evaluation of ninety-nine, site assessment of one twenty-one for a grand total also of, no, I shouldn't say also, for grand total of two twenty. And for both projects, 100% of the soil has very limited ground-based solar array anchoring system rating for both ballast and soil penetration, a low risk of concrete corrosion, and a high risk of steel corrosion, 100% would lay on prime farmland soils, and for the now North Hill, and for the North Mound and for the North Hill, North Mount Hill, oh my gosh. I'm so sorry, guys. You know, after you read these enough, when you're trying to edit, they just run together. And for the Mound Hill North Solar Project, five or six-foot excavation ratings of seventy-four point five percent, somewhat limited, and twenty-five point five percent, very limited. And for the Mound Hill South Project, five or six-foot excavation ratings of fifty-nine point eight percent, somewhat limited, and forty point two percent, very limited. The engineer for the development, developer testified that the, quote, vegetation management plan calculations would lower runoff water flow. And, and and another witness, another petitioner's witness testified that he was unsure whether the support pilings would cause any groundwater contamination, and was not willing to create test wells to monitor the same.
I move ZBA fines.
All right, thank you. Um, any second to that?
I'll second it.
I got a motion, I got a second. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member?
On, uh, E number two, was not willing to create test wells to monitor the same. Is there something that we can not make mandatory, but I mean, put that in perspective to have the wells checked?
Do you agree that this is a fact or not a fact? We haven't got to recommendations yet. I mean, that's, that's the question.
Yeah, all right.
I remember him saying that they'd not, did not agree to do it, but I think you've mentioned that's something we could put in at the end.
Okay.
This is merely a fact finding. Did he say that or did he not say that? All right, uh, any other from the board?
Okay, uh, seeing none, hearing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read, as I read it and displayed on the screen here in the courtroom. Um, adoption of the motion requires all of you, um, the vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed by nay? Motion is adopted. Okay. Number thirty-eight. The Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that neither proposed Mound Hill Road facility has any, has requested any setback variations or produced any waivers. I'll take a motion in the alternative?
I move ZBA fines.
A second.
Whoops. Got a second? Anything you want to say about your, uh, motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion, whether the Lee County ZBA finds that neither proposed Mound Hill Road facility has requested any setback variations or produced any waivers. Adoption of the motion requires all of you to vote aye, uh, the vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay? I'm desperately trying to get to number forty, gentlemen. Uh, number thirty-nine. The Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that both Mound Hill applications contain results from IDNR ECOCAT tool and recommendations from that agency, which reads that, quote, "The Illinois Ha- that Illinois Natural Heritage Database contains no record of state-listed threatened or endangered species, Illinois Natural Inventory sites, dedicated Illinois nature preserves, or registered land and water reserves in the vicinity of the project sites. Consultation is terminated," end quote.
I move ZBA fines.
A second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
Sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll, uh, put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of that motion. As I read it, displayed here on, on the screen in the courtroom, and, uh, is propounded by Mr. Burrow. Adoption of the motion requires unanimity. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay? Motion is adopted. Number forty. Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that both Mound Hill applications contain a USFWS report that recites that. There are, quote, "No refuge lands or fisheries within the project area," but but, 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 but but lists four threatened, endangered, or proposed and candidate species, quote, "species that may occur in the proposed project location, but or may not be affected by the proposed project to it. Indiana bat, endangered, whooping crane, experimental population, nonessential, monarch butterfly, candidate, eastern prairie fringed orchid, threatened." It further notes the likely or probable presence of certain migratory birds, the bald eagle, the American golden plover, the chimney swift, the lesser yellow legs, and the wood thrush, none of which are protected under the Endangered Species Act, but are so under the bald eagle and golden eagle, the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act, and, Act, and Migratory Bird Treaty Act. And that during their respective breeding season, the bald eagle is most likely present during seven weeks of its possible forty-seven week annual breeding season, and the chimney swift during four weeks of its possible twenty-three week annual breeding season. Do I hear, do I hear adoption or a request to propose that motion in the, in an alternative?
I move ZBA fines.
Motion that it finds? Got a second? Anything you want to say about your own motion, um?
No, sir.
Mr. Crawford? All right. Um, brings up putting the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as I read it, displayed it on the courtroom screen. As proposed by Mr. Crawford, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying it. That's not majority, it's all of you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay? That motion is adopted. If we do one more, we get half, more than halfway there. Um, forty-one. The Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that given the above information and data, there are no, quote, "protected lands," end quote, for the facility to avoid.
I move ZBA fines.
A second.
Got a second? And anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion, whether the Lee County ZBA finds that given the above information and data, there are no protected lands for the facility to avoid. Adoption of that motion requires all of you, uh, the vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay? Motion is adopted, halfway home. Break time for, eh, ten minutes.
Five minutes? Okay, Craig said five. He's the boss, he's the twice.
That's just great. I'm not the oldest one.
Off the record. You're not the oldest one.
Oh. But I'm next to it. Never asked you when you were.
Both?
Oh.
April.
Back to business, gentlemen. Proposed number forty-two. The Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that in its project narratives, the petitioners promised to, quote, "conform to all applicable industry standards, including those, excuse me, from ANSI and UL," and that, quote, "all equipment would be new," end quote, and its, quote, "equipment specification sheets," end quote, showed appropriate certifications for the solar panels, inverters, in, uh, inverters and transformers, but again, note twenty-five P above. Um, adoption of the motion, and, and I shouldn't have read the parentheses, it's only a report writing thing. Um, adoption of that motion?
I move ZBA fines.
In the alternative?
A second.
Got it. Motion and second? Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Um, all right, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the, uh, adoption of the motion that I read and is now proposed by Mr. Crawford and is displayed on the screen here in the courtroom. Adoption requires unanimous vote. Um, the vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay? Motion is adopted, and I went to sleep about. All right, number forty-three, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that in its project narratives, the petitioners promised that quote, all electrical components of the facility would conform to all applicable codes and standards.
I move ZBA fines.
A second.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question in just a minute. I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as proposed, as I read it and is now proposed, displayed on the screen here in the courtroom, adoption of the motion requires all of your votes, adoption, vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted. Number forty-four, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that in its project narratives, the petitioners promised that quote, the solar panel cells and modules would not exceed twenty feet in height, but that the electric utility poles will be about twenty feet, end quote. Do I hear a motion in the alternative, one of the alternatives?
I move ZBA fines.
A second.
And anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Crawford? Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion proposed and displayed on the courtroom screen. Adoption requires all of your votes, adoption be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. Number forty-five, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that in its project narratives and during its testimonial evidence, the petitioners indicated that quote, no lighting is planned, end quote.
I move ZBA fines.
Okay, got it. Anybody second that?
A second.
No comments.
Thank you, any other board members? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on, is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that in its project narratives and during its testimonial evidence, the petitioners indicated that quote, no lighting is planned, end quote. Adoption requires all of your votes. Vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. Number forty-six, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that each executed AMA contains provisions for the depth of burying electrical cables outside of the fence enclosing the solar panel arrays. In its project narratives, the petitioners wrote that quote, the project will comply with power and communication standards in the ordinance and in accordance with the COMED interconnection requirements, and during the testimony of one of its witnesses, he said that the development was designed to have collection and communication lines buried underground, but if they were not, a solar cable management system would be used. I'm wondering about that outside the fence, doesn't make sense. Yeah, it does. Do I hear a motion in the alternative?
I move ZBA fines.
A second.
Got it. Any other board member, anything you want to say, Mr. Crawford?
Uh, no, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the, the motion proposed by Mr. Crawford and displayed on the screen here in the courtroom. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. Number, whoops, forty-seven, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that in its project narratives, the petitioners wrote that quote, the project site will be enclosed with a chain-linked fence with a height of at least seven feet in compliance with the National Electric Code requirements for fencing, and the fencing will contain appropriate warning, warning signage that is in accordance with NEC S and ANSI Z seven three five safety sign standards and OSHA regulations. The fence will also have a gate at the site entry point which will be locked at all times.
I move ZBA fines.
I'll second.
All right, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No comment.
And how about any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion just proposed by Mr. Crawford. Adoption requires the vote by the majority, nope, by all of you. Votes by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The motion is adopted. Number forty-eight, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that in that, in its project narratives, the petitioners stated that quote, the project site will contain warning signs in accordance with NEC S C and ANSI Z five thirty-five safety standards and OSHA regulations and be placed at transformers and at site, at the site entrance point. Period. Visible reflective colored objects will be placed on the anchor points of guy wires and along guy wires up to a height of fifteen feet above the ground, end quote. Do I hear a motion in the alternative?
I move ZBA fines.
A second.
Crawford moves, I got a second. Anything you, thank you. Anything, any other board member wants to say about the matter? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Mr. Crawford, displayed here on the screen in the courtroom. Adoption requires all of you, the, what will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. Whoops. Number forty-nine, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that between the verbiage in its project narratives, its site plans, and the testimony of its witnesses, the petition, petitions appear to facially comply with the applicable Lee County setbacks. Do I hear a motion?
I move ZBA fines.
A second.
Got the second, anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
In this instance where you use the term facially comply, what's your interpretation of?
Well, my interpretation is, when I was doing this, I took a ruler and their scale and I made measurements, and that's the best I can do, because I wasn't going to go out there and walk it off.
Okay, that's what interpretation of facially, okay, fine.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of this motion as proposed. Any, adoption of the motion requires all of you to vote for it, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion's adopted. Number fifty, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that within the materials of both Mound Hill application, of both Mound Hill applications, the petitioners presented the manufacturer's sound power level characteristics for the Chint Power System string inverters and the Cooper Power three-phase pad-mounted EAK transformer, and engaged the services of Krebs and Lansing consulting engineers to demonstrate compliance with the IPCB regulations. In so doing, in a pair of reports titled, quote, full operations daytime sound level plan, basic sound level estimates for noise-producing project equipment, and quote, full operations nighttime sound level plan, basic sound levels for estimates for noise-producing project equipment, Krebs and Lansing used sound DBA, an expression of loudness by adjusting sound for that which is perceived by the human ear, levels as the appropriate noise measurement, gave the results of their analyzed DBA measurements, contrasted the same to everyday noises, but did not show or conclude how it analyzed measurements compared to the applicable IPCB standards.
I move ZBA fines.
And do I hear a second?
Second it.
Got a second. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Crawford proposed and is displayed here on the screen in the courtroom. Adoption requires a vote by unanimous vote, vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed by nay. That motion is adopted. Fifty-one, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that in each of its project narrative summaries, the facility stated that quote, an Illinois licensed professional structural engineer will certify that the proposed commercial solar energy facility meets all applicable professional standards. That must be on, hmm, I better check that. We're going to say that means on. No, it's under, under site, under the site conditions, in the ordinance, and such certification will be provided as part of the building permit application, and that this request is a deviation from the dictate of the ordinance that the noted engineer's certificate be submitted as part of the SUP application.
I move ZBA fines.
I'll second.
Got a second?
No questions, no comments.
Any other board member comments? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of this motion is proposed by Mr. Crawford, adoption requires the vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those, no, it doesn't require a majority, it requires all of you, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is adopted. Fifty-two, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that the appropriate application studies and technical reports bore a professional engineer's seal, signature, and except for the decommissioning plan, license expiration date. I will take a motion in one of the alternatives?
I move ZBA fines.
A second.
No questions, please.
And how about any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion proposed and displayed here on the screen in the courtroom, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted. Number fifty-three, the Lee County ZBA has observed that within each facility's project narrative is what is termed a fire protection plan. In that document, we note that there is a commitment to quote, meet with local fire department, emergency medical services, and Lee County prior to construction to review the fire protection and emergency services plan, which we find or cannot find satisfies the ordinance mandate to cooperatively develop an emergency response plan and a pledge to provide annual training, but we cannot find that there was evidence from a petitioner's witness that, that no copy of the site plans, standard operating procedures, SOPs, or standard operating guidelines, SOGs, were provided to the emergency responders. Couple alternatives there, gentlemen?
Mr. Chair, I move on the A, we find, and on the C, that we find, since it mentions that no copy, we find that no copy of the site plan is available.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Do, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Mr. Burrow, displayed here on the screen here in the courtroom. Adoption requires all of you, vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion is adopted. Fifty-four, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that a developer's witness testified that all solid ways created by the construction, operation, or maintenance of the facilities would be promptly removed and disposed of in accordance with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations. Do I hear a?
I move ZBA fines.
A second.
Got it?
No questions.
No comment, all right. How about any observation, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of that motion proposed by Mr. Crawford, displayed here on the screen in the courtroom. Adoption requires all of you, vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay, that's a winner as well. Which, by the way, Notre Dame almost did on the gridiron this year, but not quite. Number fifty-six, Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that an agent of the petitioners promised to comply with existing state and county septic and well regulations. I'll take somebody's.
I think you missed.
You skipped fifty-five.
Oh, I'll go back, we're on fifty-six now.
Do it, do it, Tim, fifty-six.
I move ZBA fines.
I just want, a second, any comment you want to make? I just wanted to make sure everybody's on their toes, see? Hearing, any other board member want to make a comment? Hearing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on number fifty-six, whether the ZBA finds that an agent of the petitioners promised to comply with his existing state and county septic and well regulations. Adoption of that motion requires a vote, all of you, from all of you to aye, vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay, that motion is adopted. Number fifty-five, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that an agent of the petitioners testified there would be no batteries as part of the operation of the facility.
Mr. Chair, I move ZBA fines.
A second.
Got a second?
No comments.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that an agent of the petitioners testified there would be no batteries as part of the operation of the facility. Adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the motion's adopted. Now we can skip down to fifty-seven, which I cleverly designed. Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that this crucial agribusiness condition is not only covered in a pair of executed AMAs, but the repair, if water is flowing, is to be immediate, and if not, reasonable measures are required, and during the testimony of one of its witnesses, the petitioners promised to do quote, a drain tile study before the, before construction would begin.
Mr. Chair, I move ZBA fines.
A second.
Got the second?
No comment.
Got the motion? Mr. Burrow didn't want to say anything about any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion just proposed by Mr. Burrow, adopt, adoption requires all of you, vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fifty-eight, I gotta save these, if I made a mistake and lost it all, myself. Fifty-eight, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that during his testimony, Austin Schwer, a co-CEO of Sundial, was read the entire above indemnification clause and while under oath affirmed that both Mound Hill Road solar entities would be bound by it, and such would be included as a provision in any transfer to a successor entity. Gents, motion in one of the alternatives?
I move ZBA fines.
A second.
Got the second, anything you want to say, Mr. Crawford?
Uh, no comments.
Uh, any other board member? All right. What's the que, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of this motion proposed by Mr. Crawford, displayed here in the courtroom on the screen. Adoption requires unanimous vote. Vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion is adopted. Fifty-nine, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that the previously recognized decommissioning plan does contain cost estimates and testimony was or was not produced in support thereof.
I move, Mr. Chairman, that ZBA fines on part one, and that testimony was not produced in support, as I recall.
You want to take a break, check that? Guys? I mean, you gotta talk about it in the open. It's an open meeting, but. Anybody remember Mr. Sloan's testimony?
I never looked up the transcript.
I thought they did have a dollar amount.
Did he talk about it?
I think they did.
It's in the book.
It's just a question. I mean, if you want them in, you gotta do it. Not.
I don't remember for a fact, so.
Leave it then.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll second it then.
Well, no, I think, I think the pending motion is was or was not, and it hasn't been seconded, so I don't need a motion to amend. Forgot who. Mr. Burrow, you want to? You want to state your motion the way you want it?
ZBA fines that decommissioning did contain cost estimates. Testimony was not produced in support thereof.
Was not?
That's what, yeah, I don't really remember him talking about it. I don't remember him talking. Do you remember?
Well, now it's seconded. Any other board members? All right. Hearing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as follows. The Lee County ZBA finds that the previously recognized decommissioning plan does contain cost estimates and testimony was not produced in support thereof. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. No, not majority, all of you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
There you go.
That's not opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay. Well, now we gotta look it up. Do you recall, Elsif, that statute talks about?
I don't.
Well, we gotta take a break while we look at it. At ease, everybody.
Amended?
Well, you have some comment you want to make. The floor's still open for comments.
In checking my notes, I saw some figures written down, apparently that verbally was given a decommission.
So, you want to move to amend your motion?
I move to amend my motion to change the last one to testimony was produced in support.
Do I hear a second to the motion to amend?
Second.
All right. Now, any discussion on the motion to amend? Mr. Burrow, anything you want to add to what you said?
No, sir.
Either board member? I'm gonna put the question. The question is on amending the motion that's been proposed to, to remove the words was not in the, in the second sentence and substitute was. So that's the first thing. All those in favor of amending the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, by nay. Okay, now the motion is amended. I will read the, the new amended motion. The Lee County ZBA finds that the previously recognized decommissioning plan does contain cost estimates and testimony was produced in support thereof. That is the pending motion. And it's now displayed on the, on the board here in the, in the court, screen in the courtroom. Adopting that motion requires unanimity. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion's adopted. All right. Number sixty, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that there was sufficient evidence that other, other perhaps during construction, the development would not create any vibration. I'm gonna add the word and. Do I hear a motion and one of the alternatives?
I move ZBA fines.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Anything you want to say? Mr. Crawford?
No comment.
Any other board member?
No.
Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion proposed by Mr. Crawford, displayed here on the screen in the courtroom. Adoption requires a, a vote by all of you. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion is adopted. Sixty-one, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that there was sufficient evidence other perhaps, other that, other than. Oops. That. Other than. I'm sorry, gentlemen. Let me catch up here. Perhaps during construction, the development would not create any air pollution. Do I hear a motion in the alternative, one of the alternatives?
I move ZBA fines.
And?
I'll second that.
Got, I got a second. Anything you want to say, Mr. K? Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Mr. Burrow. Displayed here on the screen in the courtroom. Adoption requires all of you. Adoption, the motion will be by voice. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That one's a winner as well. The Lee County ZBA finds, sixty-two, Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that there was sufficient evidence that other than perhaps during construction, the development would not create any odor.
I move ZBA fines.
I'll second.
Got a motion in, in the positive fines?
No comment.
And any comment? Thank you. Any other board member want to say anything? Hearing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion proposed by Mr. Crawford and displayed on the screen here. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Got ahead of myself on that one, typing, but I'm getting a little antsy. Number sixty-three, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find there was sufficient evidence that the development would not create any electric, electromagnetic radiation.
Mr. Chair, I find, or I move ZBA fines.
I'll second.
And I get a second. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member?
No.
Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion proposed by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? It doesn't require a majority. It requires all of you, and they were all of you. All right. Number sixty-four, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that there was sufficient evidence that other perhaps, other than perhaps during construction, the development would not, development would not create any glare or heat. Somebody want to give, propose an alternative?
I move ZBA fines.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Crawford's moved, and I got a second.
Comments?
And no comment. Any other board member?
No.
Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion proposed by Mr. Crawford and displayed here on the screen in the courtroom. Adoption requires all of you to vote for it. Your votes will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? The motion is adopted. All right. Number sixty-five, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that there was sufficient evidence that there would be no use of materials which would decompose by detonation within four hundred feet of any residential, commercial, or office district, and/or flammable or explosive materials would be provided adequate safety and firefighting devices in accordance with all applicable fire prevention codes. Adopt, would somebody like to propose that motion and one of its alternatives?
I move ZBA fines.
Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No comment.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motions urged by Mr. Burrow. Adoption needs all of you. The adoption, or the, what will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? None. Uh, sixty-six, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that there was sufficient evidence that there would be no discharge of toxic or noxious materials across the boundary of either Mound Hill facility in such concentration to be detrimental or endanger public health, safety, comfort, or welfare, or cause injury or damage to any property or business, nor would any liquid or solid material be discharged into a private or public sewage disposal system or waterway. Somebody want to tackle that one? In one of the alternatives?
I move ZBA fines.
Got the fines? Second?
I'll second it.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of this motion. Adoption requires every one of you to vote for it. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nah? Motion's adopted. Sixty-seven, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that there was sufficient evidence that there would be no microorganism cultures, pesticides, biological products, hazardous substances, toxic substances, infectious agents, or material requiring notification to a local fire department subject to, to the Illinois statutes.
This was number sixty-eight?
Yes. And I skipped one didn't it?
Yeah.
But I read it now, so.
Just want to make sure you're on your toes.
Yep, thank you. You caught me again. Of course, I'm gonna pretend I was just trying to see if you were awake.
Right. I were with you.
Somebody?
Yeah.
Want to suggest it in the alternative?
I'll move ZBA fines.
I'll second it.
Got the second? Anything you want to say about the motion, your motion, Mr. Crawford? Any other board member? I'll put the question. The question is put as to the adoption of the motion as urged by Mr. Crawford. Adoption requires a vote by all of you. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion's adopted. Number sixty-seven, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that there was sufficient evidence that an agent of the petitioner testified that human waste at the development construction site would be handled by a licensed porta potty. I think it's probably porta potty. Purveyor who would be licensed, see, it's sort of a alliteration, porta potty purveyor who would be licensed and therefore presumably required to comply with any applicable regulations.
I move ZBA fines.
I'll second it.
All right. How about? Mr. Burrow, you want to say anything about your motion?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion. Adoption requires each one of you to vote for it. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion is carried. Number sixty-nine, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that the petitioner's expert test, wit, expert witness testified that the proposed projects would have no effect on area property values.
I move ZBA fines.
I second.
Got a second? Anything you want to say about that motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, no, sir.
Um, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as urged by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. No, it doesn't. It's all of you. The vote be by voice. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Uh, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that the petitioner's evidence was that the development would not require any public services or infrastructure utilities during construction or operations of the SES, but such ignores the possibility of emergency services. How about it, gentlemen? Anybody want to give the?
I'll move ZBA fines.
I'll second.
Got a finding of, or, yeah, fines, and I got a second. Anything you want to say, Mr. Crawford?
Uh, no comment.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I will put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner's evidence was that the development would not require any public services or infrastructure utilities during construction or operation of the SES, but such ignores the possibility of emergency services. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
It's not a majority. It's all of you, and all of you did vote for it. Just wanted to see if you're still awake. The Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that the participating landowner would financially benefit from the proposed projects.
I move ZBA fines.
And do I hear a second? How about? Any comment from you, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that the participating landowner would financially benefit from the projects. The motion has to be voted upon, has to be given positive votes from all of you. Votes will be by voice. All those indicate by, by saying aye. All those in favor. All those opposed by nay? The motion is adopted. Number seventy-two, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that the members of the com-ed customer-based community would have the opportunity to reduce their electric costs somewhere between somewhere crossing off between by about ten percent by subscribing to this proposed community's solar development. Take a somebody's input.
I move ZBA fines.
Okay. Any second?
Second.
No comments.
Thank you. Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of this motion that I've changed. The Lee County ZBA finds that members of the com-ed bus, customer-based community would have the opportunity to reduce their electric costs by about ten percent. have the opportunity to reduce their electric costs by about ten percent by subscribing to this proposed community solar development. Adoption of this motion requires all of your votes, um, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The motion is adopted. Seventy-three, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find the petitioner's representative testified that fifteen to thirty construction jobs would be created to build this proposed these, I'm going to make these, these proposed projects, and one or two operations and maintenance jobs would be filled during the life of the projects, but was unsure whether local labor would be utilized as that would be up to the owner at the time those jobs are filled. Well, what do you say, gentlemen?
I move ZBA fines.
I'll second.
No comment.
Any other board member here to comment? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion is, um, as, as I read it, and then, uh, proposed by Mr. Burrow, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those, not majority, all of you, the vote be by voice, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Number seventy-four, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that regardless of any possible economic benefits, its decision to recommend or not recommend approval of the petition is not based on an increase or dis, decrease in revenue for taxing bodies, but rather the criteria and the Lee County ordinance.
Mr. Chair, I move ZBA fines.
I'll second.
Got that second. Um, anything you want to say about that motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member?
No.
Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as, um, proposed by Mr. Burrow, displayed here on the screen in the courtroom. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Seventy-five, um, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that the co-CEO of Sundial Energy, Austin Schwer, on behalf of both Mound Hill Roads North Solar LLC and Mound Hill Road South Solar LLC testified under oath or affirmation that the petitioner's would be bound by any and all promises, oops, proposals, promises, statements, and representations in their supplementary materials for a, or a SUP, or made under oath at the public hearing before the Lee County ZBA, even if not expressly specified herein or therein, and that any successors in interest would be similarly bound as either LLC would make any sale subject to the terms and conditions of any special use granted to the project. Do I hear, um, huh, do I hear someone make the motion in one of the alternatives?
I move, uh, ZBA fines.
I'll second.
Got the second, um, anything you want to say, Mr. Crawford?
No comment.
Any other board member?
No comment.
All right, we'll put the question, the question being put is on the, uh, adoption of the motion is, um, urged by Mr. Crawford, adoption requires each one of you to vote for it, um, vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? All right. Number seventy-six, the Lee County ZBA finds that, um, here we go, I'm going to make it one motion, the establishment, maintenance, or operations of the commercial solar energy facility will or will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. The commercial solar energy facility will or will not be injurious to the uses and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish and impair property values of surrounding properties, and the establishment of the commercial energy facility will or will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties, and adequate public utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or necessary facilities have, or have not been, or will or will not be provided because during his testimony, a petitioner's witness indicated that neither of the projects would require the use of any public utilities, and from the evidence heard in the application material, access roads, drainage, and any other necessary facilities would or would not be adequately addressed. I hope that's not too much of a mouthful, but I thought I'd give it a try. Somebody want to take that on in the various alternatives?
I move in, uh, seventy-six A, that the, uh, facility will not be detrimental to the public safety. And in B, that the facility will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property.
Got it.
And C, the facility will not impede the normal and orderly development improvement of the surrounding properties.
Got it. It's actually one big alternative, it's either have or have not, or it's will or will not.
Uh, have, let's see.
You can also make it, for instance, have or will be provided, I'm not telling you what to do.
Have and will have to be together then, uh, because they will be provided, even they're not there at this time.
So you're saying have?
What are you telling me?
Been, or will be, is that right?
Yes.
Why don't you take a look at the board, make sure?
Yeah.
Crossing off what I think you want me to cross off. Have, been, or will be provided, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
There we go. The, 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 the been maybe shouldn't have been read, maybe that should, word should have been.
Yeah, I think you're right, but that's okay.
That's what's confusing. Okay, yeah.
I'll, I'll read it before we, you got one more?
Oh, um, would be adequate, adequately addressed.
That is a motion, do I hear a second?
Yes.
Got to be one of you two gentlemen.
We second it, then we can discuss it.
Got to do it out loud, gentlemen, yeah. Just a discussion, there's no second, so.
Well, then we can discuss it right now?
No, we have to.
Now, now you got a second. You're right.
What if we don't get a second?
It dies.
Dies, out of order.
Okay.
The only way you're going to be able to discuss it is to get a second, though.
No. Then you gotta go back through and amend, like we did the last time, if we don't.
Well, if you don't, if, if, if something isn't to your satisfaction, otherwise, if it is, no.
Right.
So you, okay, so the, the motion dies for lack of seconds, it's out of order, in the technical words of Robert rules. Do you gentlemen want, does anybody want to propose anything in its, in its place?
I, I would propose, can I just do like letter D, or?
Well, these are the, these are the hearing factors under the statute.
Right.
Yeah. So if you want to propose something, yeah, go ahead.
I propose that on letter D, that have not and will not be provided.
Okay, so, you're making a motion, the same as, I'm trying to short circuit this, but the same as Mr. Burrow, except you are asking me to delete the word have, been, have not been. And, just a minute, yeah, so it reads have not been,
Mm-hmm.
and will not be provided, I'm going to read all this at the end and make sure we're on the same page, but, and will not be, is, now, he's the one floor, Mr. Forster. Let's see, that's crossed off, and now, take a look at the board and see if, Mr. Crawford, if that's what you want. We're just talking about D now.
Correct, yes, well, there's, scroll your page up, there's one more at the bottom of that.
Who?
There's.
Do you want to change that to would not been?
I wanted to see what he had.
So would not?
I wanted to say would.
I can handle that easy enough. Okay, take another look. Can you see the whole thing? Hopefully you can see the whole thing, or the whole D.
Yeah. Well, there's the letter E we didn't address underneath this whole thing, too.
Right, because I put a motion under.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I, I guess I stopped it there when I was drafting, because I thought it got too long.
Gotcha, okay. Yes, I'm good with that.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Got a motion, I got a second. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Crawford?
No comment.
Okay, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'm putting the question, the question being put is as follows, the Lee County ZBA finds that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the commercial solar energy facility will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. The commercial energy facility will not be injurious to the uses and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values of surrounding properties. The establishment of the, um, commercial energy facility will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surround, of the surrounding properties. Adequate public utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or necessary facilities have not been, or will not be provided because during, uh, his testimony, a petitioner's witness indicated that neither, the, neither of the projects would require the use of any public utilities, and from the evidence heard in application material, access roads, drainage, and any other necessary facilities would be adequately dressed. That's the motion. Adoption requires a vote by all of you, uh, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Going on, even though I put them, I didn't really make a numbered motion, it, got to address it. Um, motion is that the, um, Lee County ZBA finds that adequate measures have or have not been, or will or will not be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets, as one of its witnesses said under oath that during the construction phase, there would be a total of about seventy-five semi-tractor trailers or flatbed trucks at the rate of one to fifteen weekly, and fifteen to twenty personal vehicles traveling to the site weekly, and that no personal vehicles would park on the side of Mound Hill Road without permission, and after the completion of construction, there would be, quote, very little, end quote, traffic going to and from the sites, and so, given the testimony, other than during construction, there would be minimal traffic congestion in the public streets due to this proposed development. The proposed, uh, commercial solar energy facility is or is not contrary to the objectives of the current comprehensive plan of the county. So we start at E. Somebody want to take it on?
Ms. Chair, I move that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress, and under F, the facility is not contrary to the objectives of the current comprehensive plan of the county.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Any, uh, comment you want to make, Mr. Burrow?
Um, there was not much discussion about traffic problems for many of the neighbors here, they're worried about traffic problems, there for one thing in testimony.
Anything else? Anything else? That's a shaking head no, any other board member? I got to do it for the record, you can't then, take it down, shaking your head.
No.
Uh, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as, um, proposed by Mr. Burrow, adoption requires all of your votes, the vote, vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, we've reached two and a half hours, we're, we're done. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Seventy-seven, the Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that Mound Hills Road North Solar LLC's petition for special use be denied, approved. Uh, Mound Hill Road South Solar LLC's petition for special use be denied or approved. Each of those are motions, um, because you could deny one and prove the other, but take it on as one, somebody?
I move ZBA recommends Lee County Board the special use be approved for Mound Hill North.
Okay, done.
Hold on a second. Oh, I'll second it.
We got the second one, south. We got the second one, south.
You want that separate motion or same?
Yeah, I got it as two motions because I think it's that, you know, it's important to separate them. They're not one big package.
Okay.
I don't care who does it, just somebody, one way or the other.
So you want discussion on first motion?
Okay, any discussion on the motion Mr. Borough made? From you first, Craig?
No.
No.
Any other board member?
Nope.
I'll put the question, the question being put is on whether, uh, Mount Hill Roads North Solar petition for special use be approved. All those in, uh, requires unanimous vote, the vote be by voice, all those in favor and to keep by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I see where you're waiting for now, I apologize. Okay, uh, second motion that I've read.
I move the Mount Hill South Solar be approved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about that motion, Mr. Borough?
I think several of us probably have some of the same reservations that, uh, some of the testimony had about the prime farm ground, but according to our county regulations or, or, uh, rules that they have met the county regulation or the county ordinances for this.
Any other board member? All right, having, um, motion, second discussion, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Mount Hill Road, whether the ZBA recommends to Lee County Board that the Mount Hill Road North Solar LLC's petition for special use be approved, and whether Mount Hill Road South Solar LLC's petition for special use be approved. Um, the vote requires unanimous, the vote will be by roll. As to the first one, Mount Hill Road North Solar in, um, order of seniority, Mr. Forster?
Yes.
Mr. Borough?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
As to south, in order of seniority, Mr. Um, um, Forster?
Yes.
Mr. Borough?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Both motions are approved. Number seventy-eight, the Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if approval is granted for either or both petitions for special use, beyond the conditions required by the county's ordinance and those imposed on itself by the petitioner's applications. Um, applications and testimony, further obligations of the permits, permit be that Mount Hill Road North Solar and Mount Hill Road South Solar permits. Whoops. Sorry, guys. Fat fingers. Um, and any subsequent entities in interest comply with the following conditions. And then I made each one of these a separate motion. The stormwater management plan approved by the Lee County engineer as required by the Lee County ordinance be submitted to the Lee County zoning officer as a prerequisite to the issuance of a building permit.
I so move.
I'll second it.
Second. Um, any discussion, Mr.?
No, sir.
Borough, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read and displayed on the screen in the courtroom. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by nay. The engineer's certificate is required by the Lee County ordinance be submitted to the Lee County zoning officer as a prerequisite to the issuance of a building permit.
I so move.
A second.
Got a motion, a second. Um, any discussion from, on your motion, Mr. Borough?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion. For a recommendation as to engineer's certificate, adoption requires all of your approval, um, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. Uh, a drain tile study and report showing the location of subsurface drainage lines submitted to the Lee County zoning officer as a prerequisite to the issuance of a building permit.
I so move.
A second.
Got it. Uh, anything you want to say about that, your, your motion, Mr. Borough?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion regarding drain tile study and report. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, no, it doesn't, it's all of you. The vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted. The development in cooperation with the Lee County Zoning and Planning Administrator of a timely system of ongoing log of facility complaints received and resolutions thereof because although the Solar Energy Systems Section 101520 point F point one point A addresses complaints, it only does so as a requirement of an annual report.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Um, any discussion, Mr. Borough?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of a, uh, complaint log, a timely complaint log. Um, adoption requires all of your votes. Uh, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed by na, nay. Oops. That fingered it again. Burn it. And there we go. Produced prior to the issuance of a building permit to the satisfaction of the Lee County Planning and Zoning Officer an expert report that both determines and displays the applicable, excuse me, IPCB regulations for the facility's situation, and when comparing those to the Krebs and Lansing analyzed measurements applies on whether the IPCB standards have been met.
I so move.
A second.
Got a second. Um, any discussion, Mr. Borough?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of a motion requiring a analysis of what the IPCB regulations are at this site, proposed site, and, uh, how they measure up to the sound, um, DBA's already determined by the, uh, uh, by the petitioner's expert. Adoption of the motion requires, uh, um, all of your votes. Vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. Seventy-nine. The Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that from its application's site plans, there is no participating residence or platted subdivision within a quarter mile of the proud, proposed Mount Hill South Solar project, but the western boundary fence of Mount Hill Road North Solar is within one quarter mile of the eastern edge of Northland Hills subdivision and non-participating residences within it, and acknowledge both in its application pros and during the testimony of one of its witnesses, the visual screening option, option obligations, and to demonstrate written compliance with, prior to thirty days, prior to thirty days from the issuance of a building permit.
I move ZBA finds.
Any second?
I'll second it.
Got it. Um, anything you want to say, Mr. Borough?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Number eighty, with absolutely no insinuation about the particular petitions for special use at issue, but as a general matter of preparedness, the Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that it consider adopting a step-up schedule of financial sanctions for violations of an act of special use with an ultimate revocation penalty. Gentlemen?
Did we vote on seventy-nine?
We didn't? I'll go back to it and do it again, but.
I don't remember.
We did not, Kelly? All right, let's go back to seventy-nine. We're talking now about the application site plans, participating residences within, not within a quarter mile of Mount Hill Road South, but a subdivision and non-participating residents within a quarter mile of the sou, of the north, um, array, and the applicant's acknowledgement during its, in its application and the testimony that it, that needs to demonstrate written compliance with screening option obligations prior to the issue, thirty days prior to the issue of a building permit. Uh, adoption of that motion, and I read it before, it's being displayed again on the board here in the courtroom. Um, adoption requires all of your votes. Vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed by nay. Thank you, gentlemen. Caught one of my screw-ups. All right, I'm going back to eighty. With absolutely no insinuation about the particular petitions for special use at issue, but as a general matter of preparedness, the Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that it consider adopting a step-up schedule of financial sanctions for violations of an act of special use with an ultimate revocation penalty. This gentleman was at the request of your honorable zoning officer.
I so move.
Um.
Second.
Second. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Crawford?
No comment.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of this suggestion that the county board consider a step-up schedule of financial sanction, sanctions. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, no, it doesn't, it's all of you. Um, the vote will be by voice, all those indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed by nay. The motion's adopted. All right. Last but not least, eighty-one, the Lee County ZBA finds or cannot find that thereafter, and of course, this is out of order because we wouldn't know till now, your ZBA considered its findings of fact and recommendations over the course of, and I'm going to put one session on April, whoops. April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, lasting about
two hours and forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
Two hours and forty-five minutes. In total. Okay, do I hear a motion? One of the alternatives?
So moved on number.
Well, we got fines or.
One.
I'll just cross off the can.
Second.
Yeah, just, I got it. Got a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion, Mr. Borough?
No, sir.
Um, any other board member? Hearing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that thereafter, your ZBA considered its findings of fact and recommendation over the course of one session on April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, lasting about two hours and forty-five minutes in total. Adoption of the motion requires your unanimous consent. Um, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Gentlemen, thank you for your patience.
We need to have a motion to recess.
Now, that's up to you now, right? Do you adjourn or recess?
We recess until, uh, the county board, until after the county board meeting.
You take, you, you, you take it.
We just need a motion to recess until after the county board meeting.
So if we had any other recommendations we wanted to add to this?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the floor's up. I'm sorry. You're absolutely right, Tim. Got, just got a little, little dizzy up in.
Two hours and forty-five minutes, I get it. I guess the, the one thing that was not addressed that was brought up by the people that lived around there was the testing the wells before and after during these operations.
You make a motion and we'll.
I put that in a motion that.
Well, you, you phrase it and I'll type it.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll make this eighty-two. The Lee County ZBA recommends, that the next word?
Yeah, there should be a, uh, well test study done before and after.
You got it, you're going too fast for my, the, the, Lee County ZBA recommends.
A well test study.
Whoops, wait a minute. Excuse me. A well test study.
Done before.
Done before.
And during the years of operation.
And during.
Each year of operation.
Yeah.
You got, you got to tell them what you want.
County Board will.
Yeah.
They can choose or not choose. We just make a recommendation.
Right. You got to make a recommendation.
During the years of op, operation within four years apart.
But not every year, during this, a well test study done before.
Before.
Um, the.
And every other year of operation.
Before the, I'm, I'm.
Construction.
Commencement
Mm-hmm.
of construction?
Yeah.
Operation, you, you tell me.
Construction. And every other year.
And, yeah, I'm getting there, I got it.
We don't have to worry about him taking your job. We don't have to worry about him taking your job.
And every other year thereafter?
Yes.
That's it? So there's no there's no consequence, no consequences depending on the result? I mean, you can, you can say that, but you've, you've got no, there's no.
I don't know. No.
No.
That's it?
No. Yeah, results to report to the Lee County Health Department.
Take a look, make sure that's what you want.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I got a motion and a second. Um, any discussion, your, your motion, Mr. Crawford?
No, no comment.
Um, any other board member coming?
Was that stated someplace where we went through earlier? Because I was thinking the same thing when I read it, I was thinking of, we read it someplace, but.
No.
Someplace I picked up on that, I don't know where, maybe it was just in the notes too, but, you know, I agree.
There was a verbal conversation in one of the meetings.
Well. Any other discussion?
Part of it was the soil and water thing that said putting steel in the ground was bad.
Or zinc or, or galvanizing.
Yes. And I think that's the only issue about it is that decomposition, decomposition of the steel.
It doesn't say that it has a test plant.
Right. So. Because of the soil, like.
Any other discussion?
What's that?
Any other discussion?
I'm done.
Right. Uh, I will then put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA recommends a well test study done before the commencement of construction and every year thereafter with the results reported to the Lee County Health Department.
Every other year you ever. Every other year you've ever.
Didn't I say every other year?
You, you just said every year.
Every other year.
Every other year.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Put the question, in order to pass, it has to get all of your votes. Vote be by voice, all those in favor and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion's adopted. Any other motions that you gents wanna bring to the floor? I think that's a no because I don't see anybody's hand raised, nobody looking like they wanna write something out. So the, the, um, floor is back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So we need a motion to recess until after the next county board meeting. So moved. We have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're recessed on this meeting until after the county board meeting, and our next regular session meeting will be Thursday night.
We have no Wednesday night meeting.
We have no Wednesday night meeting, just Thursday night.
Thursday night at seven P.M.
Off the record.
That's at seven P.M. Okay.
Thursday is?
Yes.
Now I don't want.
Okay.